Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If we'll pause for a moment of silence. All right, if you'll stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. Before we get into council comments, I just want to let everyone know Mayor Becky Nave is away for work this week, but she is on the phone with us tonight. So she'll be joining in, but as she wasn't here, I'll be leading the meeting in her stead. Now we'll open it up to council comments.
Just a couple of comments I had. Some big weekends we've had, a lot of events going on with Rhythm and Roots and the Bristol Race, and it seemed like it was very crowded for both events. And we've had great weather, so it's always nice when we have visitors in town. They're shopping in our local stores, eating in our restaurants, and supporting our businesses, especially in downtown, which is nice. So it's been a fun few weeks, a very busy few weeks.
And I'll just say, first off, glad to be back. We're excited for October the ninth, new restaurant is opening downtown, Platterm Four, which is a charcuterie restaurant, which is a fancy term for a meat and cheese place. And I know they've been in Abingdon previously, and they're very good and very excited to have them in Bristol, so looking forward to October the ninth.
I'd like to follow up with Mr. Farnham's comments on Rhythm and Roots. Mayor Nave, I want to thank her for getting everything lined up for the governor to be here to join us. He met with the fire department, he ended up opening the festival on the State Street stage. And also, I want to bring on our fire department briefly, too. We were, Mayor Nave and I and city staff were sitting with the fire department, the governor and his staff and some legislators, and a call came in. Without hesitation, they popped up, they left the food, left the table, left the governor sitting there, and I ran off and did their jobs. So I just, it was admirable. I wouldn't expect anything less. But it was just kind of, kind of cool to see just the few of us left at the table after the fire department got their call, and it was just us. So it was very cool, very inspiring, so thank you to them. All right? Anything else? We'll move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to item V1, the public hearing for the CBD, CDBG Program Year 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, otherwise known as CAPER. All right, so I will open the public hearing on that, and then I will turn it over to Ms. Tolton.
Are there any public comments?
Oh, excuse me, my apologies. Are there any public comments?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Now, Ms. Tolton.
City of Bristol is an annual recipient of federal community development block grant funds, which is known as CDBG. This funding is through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, better known as HUD. The entitlement monies may be spent to develop or sustain viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities principally benefiting low-to-modern income persons. All entitlement monies received or dispersed through the city's CDBG program. The CAPER for the city's CDBG program is an annual assessment of the city's performance spent. We did very well last year, as you'll see on one of these slides, but we spent quite a bit of money last year, which is a good thing. So of course, the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report is better known as the CAPER, and it's a report of the last program year's activities. So we received $259,836 in CDBG entitlement grant funds. We spent $369,832, because this includes carryover from prior years. We assisted eight public service agencies. We provided them $38,970 to carry out activities benefiting low-to-modern income individuals. This leveraged approximately $2.7 million to fully operate their programs. Public service agencies also leveraged volunteer hours totaling over $73,000. Accomplishments with the CDBG funds this year, we rehabbed 11 homes, 354 uninsured individuals received medical care and prescriptions, 84 individuals received job skills training, 31 were placed in jobs, 148 neglected and/or abused children were provided assistance, 281 homeless individuals received case management services, 26 chronically homeless men received housing and case management. Thirty percent of the award was used to fund a portion of admin and code enforcement staff salaries. We also were able to purchase an ADA-compliant exam table for Bristol Regional Speech and Hearing Center. We purchased bleachers for Girls Inc., and this took up a lot of the money. I was happy to spend some sidewalk money. We installed new sidewalks along Saratoga, Buckner, and Oakview Avenue. So 1,422 low-to-modern-income family members were provided direct services with this money, and 100% of the monies directly benefited LMI individuals, and the threshold from HUD is 70%. Also, I'm happy to say COVID-19 CDBG CV activities, we received a total of $275,016. We have spent to date $275,016. So we are spent out on the CV funds. These funds were used for, we purchased antimicrobial chairs, PPE video equipment for schools, telemed equipment, laptops, software for case management teleworking, Crossroads Medical Mission, we helped them acquire the property for a new behavioral health and wellness center. The most recent purchase was a new HVAC system for Proverbs 327 Mission, which is on Harmeling, and they help homeless with different services and things like that. And also, we spent some of the funds helping to quarantine some of the homeless that had COVID. So the city spent over, a little over $69,000 through the Emergency Home Repair Program. With this funding, we did four plumbing repair projects, replaced five heat pumps, replaced three roofs, replaced gutters, and replaced windows. And here's just a few pictures. This was on Nevada Street, and these were new windows that we placed in the house. And this was a new roof on 1069 Pendergrass. It's a little hard to see, but that roof was in really rough shape, and we were able to put a new roof on there. New roof on Mary Street, you can see the older roof on the left side and the new roof on the right side. And then these were just gutters that were installed on Island Road, and the leaking gutters were causing a problem with their foundations, so we were able to replace those gutters and correct that issue. And the bigger project, we spent $156,000 in CDBG funds to install new sidewalks along Saratoga, Buckner, and Oakview, and this work was performed very well by the city's Public Works Department. Any questions?
I noticed in the report that there were a number of demolitions that were planned for and weren't performed in the last fiscal year. They're supposed to be done in the next fiscal year. Do you have a timeline for those?
Yes, basically, we can all, we have, we usually have enough money to do about three demolitions, and we typically do it every other year. Demolition goes into slum and blight, and it does not go toward our 70% that needs to be spent for low-to-modern income individuals. So we, we can't spend that much money every year for slum and blight. Okay, so basically, it's every other year. We're going to work with Code Enforcement Department. They've got some monies to do some demolitions, and we're going to put our monies together this year to do some demos.
So instead of three a year, you do six every other year, something along those lines?
Yeah, I would just say it's an average, yeah. You don't, you just, we just don't want to spend a lot of the CDBG monies for demolition. And plus, we don't have that much. Typically, we have maybe $15,000 to $20,000, and you can do two to three houses with that. So in my past experience, we've basically done some demos every other year with CDBG funds.
It looks like a lot of good things have come out of the funding, so thank you for your work there. So with that, we will close the public hearing, sorry. Next on the agenda, item D2, the approval of October 22nd, 2024, City Council Meeting Cancellation.
Counsel, I've been notified that several of you have worked conflicts at the October 22nd, 2024 City Council Meeting. Based on those conflicts, I would suggest that we go ahead and cancel the October 22nd, 2024 meeting. If there is anything of urgent need that needs to be dealt with, we can always have a called meeting sometime after October 22nd before the next meeting if necessary. So we just need a motion to approve that cancellation.
I would like to make a motion to approve the cancellation for the October 22nd, 2024 Council Meeting.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Need counsel discussion?
If something comes up, we can have a called meeting. That particular day has schedule conflicts, but if we need to do something on another day, if something comes up, we can do that.
Was, was there anything pressing that we were going to be dealing with at this meeting otherwise?
Not that we could see from the October 22nd meeting. I think our most pressing one was the October 12th, what, what's the first meeting? Eight, October 8th meeting, that was the one that was most pressing due to the fact we have the comp plan set for a vote.
So would be, anything that we theoretically would have to do on the 22nd, we could push to the 12th?
We'd push it to 12th of November.
Okay, okay. Well, if the clerk will please call the roll for us.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
All right, moving into ordinance, first reading, item E1, file number 1, 2024, request for zoning map amendment, tax map parcel 347-1-2, Old Airport Road. Are there any public comments? All right, staff report, Mr. Dietrich?
Oh, sorry. Okay. I don't have anything new to say, but I do need to say something since my boss sent me up here again. It's the same argument we've had since we started, really. It's not an argument, but our reasonings are, for the rezoning, it would just feel like the B1 is a step down from the current M2 zoning. It's a kind of a friendlier buffer between that heavy industrial and residential areas. There's been a lot of talk about it being a spot zone, which it naturally is. And my understanding of it is B1 is a spot zoning. It's put on neighborhood areas, on corners or in streets that are adjacent to neighborhoods, usually single lots. There's several around this area that are B1, single little spot zones. We know that traffic is the main concern here, and what we're offering to do, we feel like helps offset that. We really don't feel like the draw for the extra traffic to the Dollar General is reflective in that report accurately. It calls for 678 additional trips per day, which is five times of what they usually get in a store that size. But other than that, we know also that M2 could be developed right now without a public hearing. They could come in there and put a building in, which also adds traffic and tractor-trailer traffic to that little road if, you know, if they so desired. I realize it would have to go through other city review, but we're going through this process and offering to hopefully improve some situations where that could happen really without a whole lot of input. Again, the traffic position, I understand, it is busy road, it is narrow. I also wanted to suggest, there is a, currently, it's 35 miles an hour, the sight distance is an issue. I didn't have it shot between the last meeting and this one. And we meet it in one direction, we're a little short in the southwest direction. That happens to be where the curve is. As I came through that curve tonight, that 25 mile an hour sign is still posted. There's a yellow mile-per-hour sign posted there that slows people down going into that curve. And we'd love to consider, obviously, the traffic report said you want to reduce it to 25 if you're going to consider approving this project. You could almost consider just extending that curve 25 mile an hour zone another couple of lots, it would get you right to the point where it makes it a safe entrance for our proposed driveway. This is something to throw out there. It already has a 25 mile an hour posted speed. Other than that, we're going to, you know, we've offered to, even though it's not required by that traffic report, we're offering to add a full left turn lane, a right-hand taper, crosswalks, any kind of other visual safety features we could do with striping or signage to help slow people down. It's an existing traffic problem that we're, you know, we're aware of. We want it safe for what we're proposing as well, and we would do all these to city specs. They would be very useful for whenever that road gets widened, which I have to think is an eventuality. It would all be useful, and the city would benefit from all that work. That's really all I have at this point. I just want to thank you all for considering it and for Jay's work and everyone's input. So it's been a long process, but I understand how things work, and you all have a decision to make, but we're appreciative of being heard.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Dietrich.
Okay, oh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mayor Nave. So we have received a request for a zoning map amendment for the parcel 347-1-2, which is located on Old Airport Road. Property is currently vacant, and I've got it up there on the PowerPoint. The request was submitted by JMB Investment Company, LLC, who has submitted this application. The property is currently zoned M2, which is our general industrial district, and the request is to amend the zoning of that one lot to B1, which is our neighborhood shopping district. The applicant wishes to make the change so that a Dollar General store can be constructed. And I've, you've seen a lot of these before, but I just want to show you again. Over on the left side, it's kind of a little bit more of a blow-up version where you see the M2, a little bit of M1 mainly on one side of the road, and then residential district on the other side. The one on the right, it's, it's kind of panned out a little bit more. It is, with all those colors, at least for some of us, it's difficult to tell, but there is some B1 at the intersection of Keen Mill Pike and Old Airport. So there is some in, you know, a little ways away, but not right in this area specifically. The, the property itself is mostly level, grass. Like I said, it's been vacant. It is right next door to the, I think it's the Masonic Lodge, right there. And this is a copy of the subdivision plat, the highlighted area is the lot, 1.25 acres. And I will note that when this plat was recorded in 2004, there was some rideaway dedication that the city required. So they were able to widen the rideaway in front of the four lots that you see right now. The rideaway kind of varies as you go through that section of Old Airport Road. And I'm just going to pull it back here and go through some of the staff report. So a public hearing was held on August 13th, 2024, Joint Public Hearing and Planning Commission, City Council. That request was advertised on July 30th and August 6th in the Bristol Herald Courier. A public hearing sign was placed on the property by staff on July 31st, and a notice to adjoining property owners was sent via certified mail on August 5th. So this request was considered at the August 19th, 24 Planning Commission meeting and tabled for additional information. The request was heard again at the September 16th meeting, and it was not recommended for approval by the Planning Commission by a vote of five to one. There have been no previous similar zoning map amendment requests for this property to our knowledge. I do want to go through, I don't want to get too repetitive from what I did at the public hearing, but I just, I kind of want to go through real quick the legislative authority and the process for zoning map amendments as put out in the state code. So both Section 50-17 of the city code and Sections 15-2-2283, 2284, and 2285, the Code of Virginia, allows for a process to amend the zoning ordinance, including zoning map amendments. 2283 states that zoning ordinance shall be for the general purpose of promoting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public of further accomplishing the objectives of 15-2-2200. To these ends, these ordinances shall be designed to give reasonable consideration to each of the following purposes where applicable. One, to provide for the adequate light air, convenience of access, and safety from fire, flood, impounding structure failure, crime, and dangers, other dangers. Two, to reduce or prevent congestion in the public streets. Three, to facilitate the creation of a convenient, attractive, and harmonious community. Four, to facilitate the provision of adequate police and fire protection, disaster evacuation, civil defense, transportation, water, sewage, flood protection, schools, parks, forests, playgrounds, recreational facilities, airports, and other public requirements. Five, to protect against destruction of or encroachment upon historic areas and working waterfront development areas. Six, to protect against one or more of the following: overcrowding of land, undue density of population in relation to the community facilities existing or available, obstruction of light and air, danger and congestion in travel and transportation, or loss of life, health, or property from fire, flood, impounding structure, panic, or other dangers. Seven, to encourage economic development activities that provide desirable employment and enlarge the tax base. Eight, to provide for the preservation of agricultural land and forestal lands and other lands of significance for the protection of the natural environment. Nine, to protect approach slopes and other safety areas of licensed airports. Ten, to promote the creation and preservation of affordable housing suitable for meeting the current and future needs of the locality as well as a reasonable proportion of the current and future needs of the planning district within which the locality is situated. Eleven, to provide reasonable protection against encroachment upon military bases, installations, and airports. And 12, to provide reasonable modifications in accordance with the American Disabilities Act of 1990 or state and federal fair housing laws. And I'll get into why I'm reading all these just at the end of the staff report. 15-2-2284 states that the drawing of a zoning map and changes thereof shall be done with reasonable consideration given to the existing use and character of property, the comprehensive plan, the suitability of property for various uses, the trends of growth or change, the current and future requirements of the community as to the land for various purposes as determined by population and economic studies and other studies, the transportation requirements of the community, the requirements for airports, housing, schools, parks, playgrounds, recreational areas, and other public services, the conservation of natural resources, preservation of floodplains, the protection of life and property from impounding structure failures, preservation of agricultural and forestal land, the conversion, or conservation, sorry, of properties and their values, and the encouragement of the most appropriate use of land throughout the city. And 15-2-2285 describes the process to prepare and adopt zoning ordinance and their amendments. So we look at all these types of things when we ask for staff comments as far as how do they affect, how would this potential rezoning affect that, all those types of purposes and impacts? Before I get to that, I will say that as far as the text goes, the current 2017 comprehensive plan does not specifically address this area, but the future land use map, which was updated and revised in 2019, does show the subject property as heavy industrial. So the impacts that we have seen where I send these out to the staff, so first of all, it is local traffic. And I'll just say that we have done multiple traffic studies that have been prepared by our transportation engineer, Uma Pokuri. They are in your packet. I will go into those at the very end of the staff report with my conclusions in a little more detail, and then I can take some questions if you've got any on that. Natural resources, there should be no adverse impacts on natural resources if the rezoning is allowed. City staff will require all environmental-related permitting to be obtained and approved prior to development. So public facilities with the school system, the request itself should have no impact on the school system from a youth standpoint. The increase in traffic, however, could have an impact on school buses and school traffic. There should be no impact on parks and recreation facilities. So for emergency services, Eric Blevins, our fire chief, commented that the nearest hydrant is located on the same side as the requested project site on the adjacent property. The location and projected flow rates would be acceptable for a B1 designation. The location on the same side of the road as the project location is beneficial for this location due to the heavy traffic pattern on Old Airport Road. So the hydrants on the correct side of the road, they wouldn't have to do a cut or anything through the, through the road. through the, through the road. For water, wastewater, and electrical issues, Richard Atkins of BBU commented that there are no electrical issues with his request. Will Witcher of BBU also commented that water service is available by connection to a water line along Old Airport Road. BBU owns and maintains an eight-inch sanitary sewer line located with a permanent utility easement along the common property line of this parcel. Sanitary sewer service is available to the parcel by connection. Connect, then he just goes on to state that connect, there would have to be connection fees, right-of-way rest, right-of-way restoration as part of the project, as is required with all development in the city. Public transit, this is located, this particular site is located along the East Bristol Route of the city's fixed route service, and the, but the addition of the store should not negatively affect the route. Government services, we had a comment from Jake Chandler, our Public Works Director, said that all I have is that they will need to provide private trash service. A stormwater analysis will be required at the site plan stage. He also states that this is a spot zoning request, which is not a good planning practice. Economic Development Specialist Mac Chapman commented, "After looking over the area and surrounding zoning, I do not believe it is in the best interest of the city to rezone one parcel to B1." At the public hearing, we had public comments, we had three speakers. Mr. Dunaway, of course, representing the developer, was one, was in favor of the development. We had two other comments there who were against the development based on traffic patterns in the area, that that was the feeling. So the conclusion and recommendations, so staff has reviewed the application in accordance with the Code of Virginia, and we find the following. So as mentioned earlier, Code of Virginia 2283 states the purpose of the zoning ordinance, and that they shall be for the purpose of promoting health, safety, and general welfare of the public. And that code gave 12 purposes that shall be followed when a locality creates a zoning ordinance. 2284 also stated earlier in the report, informs a locality what shall be considered when applying these 12 purposes. Those are the factors that are listed in the section that were evaluated by various members of staff. So staff took those factors to evaluate the 12 purposes that we have to look at when looking at a zoning ordinance or a zoning ordinance amendment in this case. They were evaluated by various members of city staff, as well as Bristol, Virginia Utilities, in their respective field of expertise, and they were documented in the impact section. The two factors which staff identified, identified as potential issues with the request are those of traffic impact and character of the property, comprehensive plan conformity. So as far as the traffic impact, I mentioned that we had some detailed traffic analyses prepared by Uma Pokury for the application. And since the applicant had already identified the desired use of the property being a Dollar General store, the analysis showed the impact that this use could have on the, the current roadway. Old Airport Road is a two-lane street with no median and a lane width of 10 feet. The speed limit is 35 miles, miles an hour, and it's classified by the Virginia Department of Transportation as a minor arterial. At the time, we found out the most recent AADT, so average daily traffic of Old Airport Road, is 9,220 vehicles per day. So the analysis showed that a Dollar General of the proposed size would generate, and these are taken from the IT, the traffic engineer books, with a particular land use. So they are estimates, and I know Mr. Dunaway has mentioned that he, he doesn't believe that they get that much traffic on them, but this is kind of the standard that Mr. Pokury used, so that's what we were, that's the best description we had for it. Based on the size, it could have generated an additional 678 individual trips per day. That'd be 50% entering, 50% leaving. This represents an increase of 7.4% from existing conditions. The analysis also looked at the number of crashes along the corridor beginning in 2021, and the corridor did see a large increase in 2023, which was 10 crashes, which were compared to 2021 and 22, which only had seven combined crashes. So far in '24 through April is all the data we have, so far we have, there have been two crashes. And the analysis stated that introducing a new store could exacerbate the situation due to increased traffic volumes and turning movements. The last section of the first analysis showed that the site distance for this driveway into the lot would not meet the standard required for a 35 mile-per-hour road. There are currently 300 feet of site distance, and because of the topography, there would only, you'd need 390 feet of site distance, basically. So it falls short about 90 feet of required site distance. So the conclusion of the study is that the introduction of the store could raise safety concerns and affect mobility along the corridor, and that careful planning would be needed to address these concerns, including refiguring the road. The second comparison was, that was performed by Mr. Pokury, compared the traffic generated by a Dollar General to a land use that could already be put in that area, in an M2 zone. So Mr. Pokury looked at these, at three additional land uses, an industrial park, just a generic manufacturing facility, and a gas station with convenience store. All of these are by right uses in an M2. While the industrial and manufacturing uses are well below the Dollar General, the gas station with convenience store could generate as many as 4,400 vehicles per day. So we, we were asked by the property owner, and we were going to kind of do that anyway, okay, what would be allowed there now versus what would be the impact of the Dollar General? And that's why that particular traffic impact analysis was included. So at the August 19th, '24 meeting, Mr. Dunaway presented a plan to the Planning Commission where the Dollar, where Dollar General would install a right turn lane from the northbound direction into the site, as well as a left turn lane from the southbound direction. I've had included that in your packet, there's just a drawing in there. So since that plan was presented the day of the Planning Commission, the, they tabled it to allow city staff the time for evaluation. So during that time, Mr. Pokury prepared a third analysis of the corridor, where we did a speed analysis and a new traffic count of that corridor in that area. And a few things that were found were that, the biggest one, I think, is that 85% of the vehicles on that section of Old Airport Road were traveling 50 miles an hour or over, which for a 35 mile-an-hour street with roughly 9,500 vehicles per day was a bit surprising to staff, let's put it that way. So there is a speeding issue going on out here, as well as a high number of vehicles. And for a narrow street, as was stated earlier, that could be a potential problem. So the, the conclusions in that study, and if you have any specific questions about it later, I can answer. So the preferred outcome would be to allow no development until the entire road is configured. But in the absence of delaying all development, it was recommended that both a right and a left turn lane be constructed entering the proposed site. The left turn lane should have a minimum 100-foot taper and then 100 foot, feet of storage length prior to the driveway into the site. The right turn lane would have a minimum 100-foot taper and storage length of 100 feet as well. Those are the minimum standards per the VDOT manual. The, the drawing that was given to us from Dollar General, they showed these on there. There weren't any distances, so we don't know if that's the exact amount, but these would be the recommendations of the city. The last recommendation is that the speed limit along the entire corridor of Old Airport Road be lowered to 25 miles an hour from its current 35 miles an hour, and that the city should implement speed enforcement and traffic calming measures to slow down traffic. Mr. Dunaway did speak of the advisory sign, the 25 mile-an-hour advisory sign in that area. That is all that it is, is advisory. It was based on either site distance or the maximum safe speed of the curve through there. So the police department couldn't write you a ticket if you went 35 through there for speeding, but it, it is, it does serve to, to warn motorists, hey, there's an upcoming condition that needs you to slow down. The introduction of any development along this corridor is going to generate additional traffic and potentially cause problems which would require improvements to be made. A Dollar General store will certainly cause traffic to increase, as well as any other permitted use in a B1 or an M2 zoning district. If the rezoning was granted, or if a business wanted to open in the existing M2, the city may require the developer to perform upgrades to the system to help mitigate potential problems with traffic. Additionally, as mentioned earlier in the report, school buses and traffic from the school could be affected by this increased traffic. As you know, Bristol, Virginia recently consolidated all of its elementary schools into two new ones located approximately one and a half miles from the site, and that Old Airport Road is a main route for many of the school systems, school buses, and parent traffic. Secondly, the character of the property and conformance with the comprehensive plan. The property, as mentioned before, is currently owned, zoned M2 general industrial district, and the request from the applicant is to rezone the property to B1 neighborhood business district. The Dollar General was not permitted in M2 district either by right or special use permit. Two comments by staff addressed the character and use of the property. Our economic development coordinator stated they did not believe it is in the best interest to rezone the property, and the public works commented that it is a spot zoning request, which is not good planning practice. Community development staff believes that the request to rezone this one lot meets the definition of spot zoning. Spot zoning is the application of a zone, zoning to a specific parcel of land within a larger zoned area when the rezoning is usually at odds with the locality's master or comprehensive plan and current zoning restrictions. The proposed lot for rezoning is surrounded by M2 general manufacturing, manufacturing district, and R2, single and two-family residential. Also, the future land use map of the city's comprehensive plan shows this area as heavy industrial. Rezoning one lot in this manner, in the manner of this request does not represent an orderly land use planning process. So using the standards and factors set forth in the Code of Virginia Sections 15.2-2283, 2284, and 2285, staff recommends that the city council not approve the request for a zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. So we are looking for a motion. However, I do want to ask Mr. Eze a question. If, I'd like for us to have a discussion on this.
So if you want a discussion, there needs to be a motion in a second for the discussion, and then you would have a vote on whether to approve or not approve the ordinance.
Another point of clarification, a motion can be to approve or to table, we can still have discussion, correct?
The, the motion right now is either, the motion at the moment is a motion to, for the first reading of the ordinance by full or caption-only. So you can motion for that, however, if you choose after the discussion not to have the first reading of the ordinance, there would be a vote, and then it would be, the majority of the votes would be a no vote, which would mean the ordinance would not pass.
So I'd like to make the motion for first reading, because I'd like to get into discussion.
Is there a second? Second.
And that's by caption-only.
Second. Thank you.
Counsel, discussion?
Well, is it okay if I jump in?
Please.
I'll jump in. Just as full disclosure, Mr. Dietrich stated that the Planning Commission voted five to one to not rezone it. So I was the one, and wanted just to explain kind of what my thoughts were by it. I had some concerns at first, and then as it evolved, I was okay with it. So just a few quick thoughts, it's already zoned for industrial now, so it, something could come in there right now that could actually generate more traffic. You know, so that's one thing. There, I think, you know, there's over 9,000 cars on the, on the road already. As Mr. Dunaway, who's here tonight, mentioned a few times at the Planning Commission, their goal is not really to, I guess, be a destination where they add traffic, like, like a Walmart or a water park or a casino, where you build it and everyone comes to it. Their goal is to be on stretches where there's already traffic and just capture some of that as people pull in and need something. So, so there's already traffic on the street now. Now, one thing I was concerned about was the speed limit, because it is 35, and a lot of people are going 45 or 50 on that road. Regardless if there was a store here or not, I've mentioned at the Planning Commission, I'm in favor if this is looked at to lower the speed limit on this stretch of Old Airport. This is between King Mill Pike and up to Bonham Road. Just because there's lots of houses on this stretch anyway, it's a busy road, but there's also a lot of residential, too. So, you know, if that was looked at to, to try to slow traffic in general, I know that's more transportation safety, so, but that's just a thought there. I had some concerns about lanes, like if you're coming from the northeast to the southwest, and someone was stopped there in the lane, turning left. So then they went back and said they would propose, that they would put in turn lanes coming from each direction, so. And then another thing I thought about was just, this is kind of a main stretch between, like if people are out in the county, out King Mill Pike, and they use this stretch through the city to go to other stores in the county, like Walmart, or Target, or Five Below, or wherever. So my thought was, okay, it's bringing county people in, they're already driving by, and they'll stop in here, and it'll bring in more tax revenue in the city. I don't know how much it would be, but looking at that, and again, I'd, I'd be okay with it if there was turn lanes. And also, again, I'm open to lowering the speed limit. We actually had some folks at the last meeting, at the Planning Commission meeting, that, that live right up the road, and we asked them, you know, would they be in favor regardless of this if the speed limit was lowered? And, and I think their, their attitude was, well, people, no matter what it is, people are going to speed anyway because they're so used to it. And we talked a little bit about different ways to have, like, traffic calming devices, not necessarily speed bumps, but maybe it's those, like, those white, like, call it like a rumble strip, or there's the sign where it's like a radar sign, and it tells you what your speed is as you're, as you're going by. So I think that stretch needs to be looked at anyway, and we've talked about that, but that was a few things that were going through my mind when I was the one vote at the Planning Commission. So I don't know if I speak for the majority, but just some thoughts I had. But I will say again, it's, the thing for me was the, the turning lanes and the speed limit, so.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Dietrich. So first thing, I was looking through the comprehensive plan. This section of town is not specifically mentioned, is it, or have I not found it?
Not really these particular lots. I mean,
Yeah.
You know, there, there are general statements about manufacturing in general, and in tax base, and industrial, you know, as to whether or not you would want to rezone parcels, but not specifically here. So I just kind of fell back to the, the future land use map, which does have this area showing as heavy industrial.
Because in the current configuration, I mean, it would be very difficult for heavy industrial to be, obviously, in that area, you know, if they're trying to access from Old Airport Road.
Well, yeah, I mean, it is a 1.25 acre lot, so you're only going to have something so big without maybe combining some of those lots.
Even if you take in those other lots, if you're accessing for heavy manufacturing from Old Airport Road, it's going to be very difficult.
Correct, and is somebody going to want to do that?
And an imposition on the people who live there.
Right.
So I mean, you know, obviously, that's a concern, you know, putting, putting a business there is a concern, setting aside anything with, with the site and the speed, which, you know, I was looking at this table of speeds. I mean, at one point, the high speed was 63 miles an hour. You know, that's a, that's a 35, and you know, I, I grew up at the end of Old Airport Road where it intersects with King Mill Pike, and I know that Mr. Farnham lives in the vicinity now. I've seen a lot of people speeding on the road, but I've seen a lot of rear end, rear end collisions on that road. I've hit a deer on that road before, you know, that's a, that's a kind of a dangerous road under, under good circumstances. My concern would be obviously that, you know, where the entrance would be, where you, and you see it in these maps, you know, you're, you're kind of coming downhill on both sides, and there's a curve. You know, it's, it's going to create a traffic. sides, and there's a curve, and, you know, it's, it's going to create a traffic hazard situation, so, setting aside, setting aside the speed, I think even if everyone's going 35, it kind of creates a problem. I do think we need to address the speeding situation, and I know we're, obviously, we can't do that tonight, and we're limited in what we can do, anyway, because there's nowhere for police to radar in that area, but I do think we need to address those issues, and then also address the fact that this might not even be a good place for manufacturing, let alone, you know, retail.
If, if heavy industrial wanted to come to this location, could we require that they access it from Beacon Road?
I think they are entitled to an entrance on their property, however, the city could impose certain restrictions and conditions in order to make that access as safe as possible. But, but they have frontage on Old Airport Road, so they would, they would really be able to use that as their driveway, yes. If there was a easement behind, or they own some property, you know, we could, we could make suggestions, but from a require them, from Beacon Road, I don't think we could. But that might be more for a city, city attorney.
Well, I'm pulling up, I'm pulling up the GIS map right now, because there may be a right-of-way issue. I'm unsure if that property is owned.
Property that rears on by Blaylock Properties, and it also, it has access to both roads.
Yes, I mean, whoever wants to use either 347 hyphen 1 hyphen 1, or 347 hyphen 1 hyphen 2, they would have to get a right-of-way, either through Blaylock Properties, or, yeah, it looks like Blaylock Properties owns everything behind it. So that would, that's not something the city could impose upon a private landowner.
One thing that was brought up, speaking of traffic, and at the Planning Commission meeting, we talked a little bit about pedestrian traffic, walkers, like, walking to the store and along that road, and I think Mr. Hartley mentioned, he's seen, on the Planning Commission's mentioned pedestrians that he has seen near the other Dollar General nearby on King Mill Pike and Valley Drive, people coming down from, from Kingtown, and the need for sidewalks, and, and I know it's a long-term project, but we, we even mentioned, you know, I think it'd be great to have sidewalks all along King Mill Pike, Old Airport, up to Bonham. That's a long-term, future project, a big project, but there, I've definitely seen some pedestrians already on Old Airport Road, so.
I would note, on that, on that topic, of the, tell me if I'm missing anything, so there's the Dollar General Exit 7, Exit 5, King Mill Pike, Euclid, and I think that the one that I can think of in Bristol, Tennessee, they're all easily accessible if you're walking, either via sidewalks or by large shoulders on the road. So, I mean, this one would be unique in that situation from a safety standpoint.
They've offered to effectively increase the street width by 50% at their own expense. Is this the low point of the street where they could potentially improve some of the site visibility at the process, in the process of making those improvements?
It's pretty close to the, the very bottom, I mean, yeah.
Three feet to the, to the, we've got the required distance, we've got 390 feet, we've got 300, we've got 350, so if you could raise your driveway to three feet, we'd all have to raise the road, let's just say. And we, we're at that area, and that's perfect, we need to tighten this apartment up, not the other side, but that would be one thing.
Right, so, but to answer, it is pretty much down in that lowest area. That one, or perhaps the, the lot to the southwest might be, but it's right in that area. Kind of where it starts to go down as you come around that way.
Oh, I guess I like to look for options. Some of them may be out of the box that the city can't do anything about, but nevertheless. One of those things would be if they were to use this property instead, where they would have access to both roads, and they would have access at, at the high point on the road rather than the low point, where they would have much better visibility. And the other one would be the other property on Maple Grove, which I understand is for sale, probably a lot higher, higher cost than what they're looking for, but it, it's also at a higher point, and it already has a private drive there, just as options. But, if they were to raise the road, since they already have the low point, and they're already talking about making improvements to the street, anyway, it'd be interesting to see what an engineering study could show, or opinion might be if they were to improve those site distances significantly in both directions. Together with the already proposed reducing the speed limit, I don't know that because of the issues that we already have in that area, that either one would be enough by itself. But if they could make that significant and expensive of street improvements at their own cost, that would help their case. Right now, as I understand it, they've only talked about increasing the street width, not raising its level.
Yes, that's correct.
Well, I, I think this discussion has, has shown that this area might need a little attention outside of this discussion with other avenues. But also, I, I do want to thank staff, Mr. Dietrich and your team, for the extensive work on this, the multiple studies, the multiple, everything, we appreciate it. Very good information. Thank you, Mr. Dunaway, for being here and for, for providing options, trying to work with us on it. I do think that we've got a lot of good information here. Mayor Nave, I don't want to exclude you, if you have anything to add, we'll let you phone in there.
Thank you. I don't have anything else to add at this time.
Thank you.
I think that in general, as things stand right now, someone could change my mind, but my bottom-line conclusion, after seeing one side, seeing the other side, and trying to come to a bottom-line conclusion, would be that I can see ways that this could move forward, but as proposed, I don't know that it would be safe to just approve rezoning, because that's all that we have in front of us, approving rezoning. In fact, the offer to widen the street wouldn't be a condition of the rezoning, as I understand it.
That is correct. It's not, it's not a use. It's not imposing a condition by proffering uses in the zoning ordinance. Those would have to be done prior to the public hearing, but that, that's what you would do with a conditional zoning. This would be more of, they're making the offer, and, you know, the city would, if, if it were rezoned and they submitted a site plan, City Engineering Department, Public Works Department would hold them to that, but it wouldn't be a condition of the rezoning. You are correct.
Without having something a little more binding in nature, I don't know that it would be safe for us to approve it as presented. That would be my bottom-line conclusion, after weighing both sides.
Any other comments?
So, before we vote, let me ask, so, the motion that is active right now is for first reading of the ordinance by caption only. Do we, do we want to vote on that, or do we want to maybe modify the motion and table this for a little while? Because if we vote the motion down, that kills it. If we table it, then maybe they can go back to the drawing board and figure something else out. Just don't hypothetically.
They've put a lot of work into this. If they can work something out with the city planning department, I would like to give them every opportunity to do so.
I'd like to remind everyone here that this is just a request for rezoning. This is not a decision, a give-and-take to see what, and I mean, I know that's harsh, but it's not a give-and-take to see what a developer can and can't do in order to have something rezoned. It's something, you know, you have to consider, what would you do in a situation if this were just a empty piece of property, and the landowner wanted to come to you and rezone it as B1 without any other information whatsoever? Because there's nothing that says the property owner couldn't do that. So, attempting to add conditions, I think, is probably not appropriate at this point, but.
Well, I mean, you know, by that, by that line of reasoning, you know, most of the time, we would turn down zoning requests, if we, if we had no idea what was going to be done with it, if they just came in.
Most of the time, it's not a rezone. Usually, it's a conditional rezoning or special exception that allows us, as a locality, to put conditions in place. And this is a rezoning which does not allow, unless Jake corrects me, does not allow for conditions to be put in place for the purpose of a rezoning.
Right, not this particular one, because, I mean, they would have had to proffer uses ahead of time from the B1 district. We, we look at this, they offered a Dollar General store is what their ultimate goal was, and submitted the conceptual drawing that you have. The proper, the rezoning itself, however, could be, anything that's permitted in a B1 zone could eventually go there if the Dollar General, something happened and they decided not to, to build. We did the traffic analysis on a Dollar General, or a Dollar General-like store, because that is what we were told. We don't often have that ability. If we look at traffic, sometimes we'll have to just take the, a use, you know, from that list of B1 or B3, and just apply what we think might be the highest one, as far as that goes. This one, we just had a little more information on the front end. But the rezoning itself is just, you know, the request is for that B1, that one piece of property to be B1. And that was where staff had the objection of not, you know, being the spot zoning, not being good planning practice, and being out of conformance with the comprehensive plan.
I think with that, we, personally, I would like to see us move forward with the motion on the floor. I mean, we've, we've got extensive information here from city staff, we've got studies, we've got, I think we got all we need to make a decision on it.
Fine with me.
Any further discussion?
Agreed.
Thank you. Clerk, will call a roll?
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
No.
Osborne?
No.
Pollard?
No.
Nave?
No.
Thank you all. Next on the agenda is matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. I don't know, I don't have anything, okay, nobody signed up for that. So, moving on, next on the agenda is our consent agenda.
A move for approval of the consent agenda is presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
All right, finally, we're to adjournment, is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nave?
Thank you all.
Yes.
Not bad.